It's 5:30. We'll get the work session, start the work session. First item on the agenda is stop signs, sedge grass, timber banks, parkway, also tall tree lane. Go to the last here, obviously. It's not current. There's a lot of houses there now. I know we have, I did not bring the petition out, but we had about 40 signatures from residents at Timber Banks asking for stop signs over here in September. I know we had discussed it, and I think I dropped the ball. I'm following through with it. So here we are again. Got the town engineer over here, Al. I know that, I know this intersection's been an area concerned with Forest Ridge and Tall Tree there with it looping and then future development going off of there. And then the other question from the residents was over here, this is sedge grass. You know, now I don't know, the residents had asked for stop signs at each location. Currently, there's stop signs at the end of sedge grass, but nothing at Tall Tree Lane. So I guess it would be up to the board to determine if we want stop signs in both places. I mean, as you can see, it's only about eight houses between each intersection there, you know, for a distance, to give you an idea of how long of an area that is. Al, do you have any recommendations?
Yeah, so the distance there does not justify an all-way stop. There's no sight instruction, there's visibility obstructions or anything like that. From a stop sign warrant analysis, an all-way stop isn't justified there. A stop sign for sedge grass entering Tall Tree is certainly justified. I can see adding an all-way stop at the intersection of Tall Tree and Forest Ridge. Right now, it's only a stop for Tall Tree. I would support doing an all-way stop at the four-way intersection, but I'll be perfectly honest, for that short of a distance of road, nobody is, it's not going to do anything, and the only thing that's going to happen is people are just going to roll through that stop sign, and it actually creates more of a dangerous situation than what already exists. We don't have, for example, we do not have any conditions like that in Radisson where we've done an all-way stop for a side street entering a collector historically.
Yeah, well, I mean, the other part of that is, we also, most collectors in Radisson are not, don't have houses on them. I mean, I compare Tall Tree, unfortunately, to something similar to like Drake's Landing or, you know, Deep Lake. And we don't really have houses on that tree.
See, I don't know, I mean, from a density and number of houses standpoint, I don't think you can compare it to those two.
Even in Abbott's.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know how you can compare it to Drake's Landing. Drake's Landing on all the side streets has got to have 1,000 houses coming off of it. You know, the whole development here is 648 or 639, whatever it is. I mean, that's the maximum development right now. I just don't see it as a, sure, it's somewhat of a collector, but it's comparable to like Kilo Road and Jeff's Development, or Wymark, not Wymark, Hiltonwood would be another one that it compares to. We certainly don't have a stop sign at every intersection on Hiltonwood in Clinton Heights. I mean, that's my, from an engineering standpoint, and a stop sign warrant analysis, an all-way stop at sedge grass and Tall Tree in either location is warranted.
Okay. But Forest Ridge and Tall Tree at that?
I would go for, I think you could justify an all-way stop there.
Okay. Now, it's purely a board decision. I'd ask the engineer for his input on a, you know, logistical or, you know, road speed standpoint. What do they want? The neighbors had asked for stop signs in both intersections of sedge grass and Tall Tree.
And all-way stops or just a stop sign?
All-way stops at that point. They would be, right now, they currently have stop signs at sedge grass entering Tall Tree at both ends. They would want all-way stops at both sides. What I feel is we would probably put an all-way stop at Tall Tree and Sedge Grass, the first intersection, which would be the westernmost, and then you have the all-way stop at Forest Ridge and Tall Tree, you know, where Al is suggesting the call one, and not have one at the second.
I agree with what Al said, especially with the, you know, I see this in my neighborhood where you don't have all-way stops, then what you're going to see is people are going to come back and say, well, now we got people rolling through the stop signs, right? Can we do something about that? That's what you're going to see.
Yeah, I mean, the enforcement part will be difficult.
Right. I don't think it's warranted. I agree. I'm going to use the engineer's advice.
Do you have some of the neighbors you know?
Oh, sure.
Hi. The only thing I wanted to bring to your attention was, the main reason for trying to get a stop sign, at least one down there, is because this is the only way all the big construction equipment gets in every day and out. And they're going to be building for years to come. And they come down that street, you know, no stopping them, there's no stop sign, and they are tooling in and out all day. And it's not like it's going to be done next year. It's going to be years before it's done, with no other way in or out. So that's why, to them, it's very important.
Yeah.
Do they have access up?
No, no, not until they get further back into, and that's not, I know the developers working on placing roads in the back part, but that's nothing formal.
So Evelyn, with one stop sign, one all-way stop sign at Tall Tree do what you want it to do, as opposed to having it at both intersections?
Well, there's one stop sign at the intersection of Forest Ridge and Tall Tree. Tall Tree still doesn't stop. It's just across it stops. Where they really need one is coming in at, I think probably the best one would be at the first intersection of sedge grass and Tall Tree, just to stop it, slow things down.
On the right in orientation with this?
Yeah, you come off a river road, right behind a Y there, and they're moving along. There's nothing to stop them there. They're flying through. And they really are. Some of the people, there are a lot of young families on that street, a lot, and they're literally chasing trucks down and saying, you've got to slow down, you know?
Right.
So it's dangerous.
Is there a speed limit sign on that road when you go in?
There's, yeah, there is speed limit sign, but there is no, or.
And we also have to put up signs, watch out for children, you know?
We can ask for a speed, we can't just arbitrarily reduce, we have to do a speed sign, which would require the state. And usually, those aren't done winter time because they put the.
You've got to do a speed study before you can put in a stop sign?
No.
No, no.
If we were talking about reducing speed limit, but you get back to an enforcement issue, we're reducing the speed limit.
We'd rather have a stop sign.
Yeah, they might lower it to 25, but they're not going to lower it any further.
And we all know that people won't go slow anyways. So you really need the stop sign.
Yeah, and that's, you know.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, the enforcement part of the stop sign will also become an issue. I mean, we can ask the troopers and the sheriffs to try to attend to it, but, you know, getting developers and the people who work for them, the builders, to, you know, remember that they're driving through a neighborhood to get to where they're.
But at least it might slow them off.
Sure. Yep. Well, that's why I was, you know, saying that I could see probably something, you know, coming into the development at the first intersection with sedge grass and Tall Tree, and then the intersection of Forest Ridge and Tall Tree to be, you know, those two places would, I think, help slow vehicles down.
I agree.
That's not the intent of a stop sign. I know the engineer's going to remind me of that, but it's a, it's a very tight, it's a pretty tight road. And right now, with all of the construction traffic and other people, it is busy.
Here's a thought, before we make that an all-way stop. Have we made any progress on getting the speed, uh, speed limit signpost additions like they have going in the Village? Or is that in the 2026 budget?
Oh, for the flashing lights inside?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have two of them.
That would be, this would be an ideal spot to put one of those and see how much it improves, because I do think you would see an improvement with installation of all of those.
No, contractors. Contractors, why?
I would support both intersections. I mean, the neighborhood wants it. It doesn't impact the greater community. They're going to, it's going to make some happy, and reduce truck speed.
Listen, how do you, how do you feel, Pete?
I agree with, and I don't know that if everything were already built up, and it were just residential traffic, one in, the one at Tall Tree Lane and sedge, sedge what?
Sedge Grass.
Sedge Grass?
Yeah.
May not be as necessary, but with constant construction traffic, I think it's not a bad idea to stop them, not slow them down, stop them.
Right. Okay. Then we'll, the next meeting, we'll draw up the language to hold the public hearing at the second meeting in December. And, because I know there's, Dina told me there's a lot of language regarding the stop sign motion, so I don't have that with me tonight to know and do it, but we'll make sure we get it correct for the next meeting to be able to publish it and get the public hearing. Evelyn, is that okay?
Yeah, it's great.
Good. So we're looking at, you know, the intersection closest to the Y for, you know, Tall Tree and Sedge Grass, and we'll do an all-way stop at Tall Tree and Forest Ridge.
Great.
Hopefully, hopefully that helps.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Next item up on the agenda is the, I got Veterans Outreach Program, and we have Harvey Sellers is here. I think I got it right, correct?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Harvey is the, Jim Reynolds, who was doing this, we did an IMA with Town of Van Buren, just on per hour basis for Veterans this year. Jim had got a new job, and he didn't have the time to be able to fulfill the duty, so he stepped down. And Jim and Mike Hart from Anadaga, sorry, Salina, reached out to Harvey. And Harvey is resident of Lysander.
Resident of Lysander, Village of Baldwinsville yesterday.
And if you want to give a little bit about yourself, because this is the first time.
Sure, sure. I'm a Navy veteran. I served six years in the United States Navy, two years of school, and four years on a nuclear-powered submarine. I'm a machinist mate, was a machinist mate, operated all the steam-powered equipment in the submarine. I was also an engineering laboratory technician. I took care of the chemistry in the reactor coolant system and also in the secondary system. Navy kind of got a two-for-one deal with me. I got a little extra school, and they got a little extra help. But I've been actively involved with veterans ever since I was discharged from the Navy. I've always looked to help, help people out and make sure that everyone is aware of not only this position, but the positions, responsibility and duty to show a veteran what's out there for them to see, what, what help that guy or guy or gal may need, showing them the different programs, both on a federal level, a state level, and here in a local level. Tons of availability of help out there for these veterans. And some of them are in great need of it, and some of them may not realize how much it's out there. So it's my vision to see the position publicized a lot, let people know that we're here to help them. It's definitely a good thing, and I think a lot of good stuff can come out of it.
Hey, Harvey, those are good words. How would you publicize? I mean, and you would take the mantle, the responsibility for promoting it?
Yes, I would. Yes, I would. I could do that, crew. I've talked a couple of things with Mike Hart through, maybe publicly going out and, like in post office or local restaurants, and try to get a, an agreement with him, you know, to put a little 8x10 sign up, hey, this is the office, this is available for all veterans, any help that you would need. I'd like to see a little bit more publication in the messenger about this office, the things that we do, have done, and looking to do in the future. I think that would be a very good communication tool. And I even thought about making little magnetic signs for the side of my pickup truck, and when I'm out driving around, people could see, hey, there is help out there for me. Maybe I'll give the guy a call. We have business cards that were issued out of the Town of Van Buren. I don't know if the town line is saying or has them yet, but I'd like to see that card with Van Buren and Lysander Town on it, and talk about the Village of Baldwinsville being an outreach program to encompass both areas. So I think right now, we also have a lot of veterans that apply for discounts on their assessors on their taxes and stuff. And we can get a list, working with the tax assessor of those veterans, and I can sit down and call everybody, you know, 10, 15 calls a day, or whatever it takes, and help get the word out through that way. Also, communications with the American Legion. Down at the Legion, we're, they publicize a lot of help out there for guys, and there's a lot of guys that help out down there. And we've done a lot with, I've been around a lot with Mike Hart over in the town of Salina and the things that he does there. He has a program where every once a month, the vets get together and have breakfast and talk about it. We have town supervisors come by, town counselors come by and talk, and just have a good afternoon of being able to get guys out there and let them know what helps out there for them.
The other thing I would recommend, and I, you know, will definitely appoint to Jim, it's not a criticism towards him, but I'm not so sure he took advantage of the town board meetings, which is filmed by PACB TV.
Yeah.
And I can't imagine the town supervisor not allowing you to come on a regular basis and just get, you know.
Oh, I would be more than happy to do that. Yeah, every, like I said, I'm retired from all my nuclear power stuff, and looking for something to do, and I think this is a real good thing. I look forward to be able to do it.
Yeah. And I talked to Supervisor Vanderwater last night. I stopped over at her meeting. And, you know, currently, the IMA is, it's an hourly rate. They send us, you know, every five, six months, she sends us a bill for what was, you know, the hours you had put in, and she gets a list of what you've done, you know, the outreach that occurred at that time. So it wouldn't be anything different than what we are currently agreeing to. I think this year, we each put 7,500, and I don't even think Jim got to $1,000.
Right.
You know, hourly, you know, and that was fine. It was our first year. We wanted to see, you know, how it would go.
Right.
I think yourself, you have a lot more time being retired. I assume you're a member of the Legion over here, you know, which is, we don't have the VFW anymore, so it's one of the last places we have for veterans and to be able to outreach. And I know Jim had, I'm sure you've talked to Jim, I know he had ideas of what he was trying to do.
Definitely. We had a great hour and a half, two-hour session of turnover with him. He talked to me about everything he's done in the past. He showed me his logbook. I plan on continuing the logbook. I look at making some forms up for cases, people to call up for help, being able to keep track of everything, whose we're helping, what we did, and how it, the resolution, and close out the case.
Yeah. And I know, I know on one hand, we had a guy that would come in that was sort of transient. Over the summer, he would occasionally pop in here at town hall, and he got on our radar, and I called Jim, and Jim had already talked to him, and, you know, he talked about for him. And then Jim also got back to me and said, oh, just so you know, he went, he moved south with family, because people, he walked. He was very adamant about being able to do his own thing, and that's, a lot of veterans are very proud to be self-sufficient.
Afraid to ask, and I want to make sure the word gets out that, you know, hey, don't be afraid to ask. There's tons of stuff out there, and Lord knows, a lot of guys really sacrificed a lot for their country and their nation, and very deserving of the help that's out there.
Great. Does anybody else have any? If everybody's good with it, we'll probably just continue the agreement. You know, we'll give you all the support you need.
Awesome.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Harvey.
Yeah, it's nice meeting you. Nice meeting you.
Yes. Okay. Next item up, organizational meeting, January 1st. Reason we have this on the agenda is, we are, with January 1st being, obviously, New Year's Day, it's also a Thursday, which we usually meet the first and third Thursdays of the month. With that, creates a unique set of issues with us, because the next Thursday would be a planning board meeting. Tuesday and Wednesday, we have court the next week, which will already be, probably have in court, because they won't have court for Christmas and New Year's. So we were, you know, contemplating a 10 a.m. organizational meeting on January 1st, which last time I know it occurred in Lysander was Johnny and Melinda back in 2012. So that would just be the organizational meeting, as we have a new highway superintendent taking office. We have, you know, the town clerk would be taking back her next term. One of the judges, we've reached out to everybody. We have two board members coming on. Everybody's available coming stuff for the judge, and then I was, you know, bringing it up to the town board to see who was available. Lido Jeff had said he could attend, and, you know, talking to Mr. Moore, he may be out of town. So.
Hopefully, I am.
Right. So that's, I mean, I think it's our best chance to do the meeting, so we'll probably stay at 10 a.m. January 1st, and if Mr. Moore is available in here, that's great. If not, we totally understand.
I understand too.
Just wanted to bring that up, and we'll set the meeting schedule.
I mean, I understand that you would hope me, whether I'm able to be here or not.
Yeah.
Usually out of the state.
Yeah. Well, I wasn't sure how many people do travel. I meet with little to nothing going on. I'm usually here. Okay, next item on the agenda is procurement policy revisions.
And, January 1st is New Year's Day.
Yeah.
Which is a national holiday. Normally, a municipality would not, not even by matter of preference, but matter of reality, conduct business on a national holiday, just like you would hold a meeting on Christmas Day or Thanksgiving Day.
What would our option be?
What about Monday? You have time for an organizational meeting. It does not have to be.
Well, because if those people are sworn in, because they take their oath.
They take their oath, and they, they're sworn in as the first, but honestly, even most municipalities don't hold their meetings on the first or the second. They're usually within, I think you're supposed to do it, I'd have to double check, but I think it's within seven days. So you have, and you have some other board meetings coming up, so you have some options to think about this. You could do it on the second or the third, if it's not a Saturday, or, you know.
Right.
Another one of those days, you're not, the law doesn't require you to hold your org meeting on the first of the year. So the fact that people take office officially on that day, I guess if there's something that they actually had to do, we could accommodate that with a, at least signing of the oath book. Your meeting itself, for example, if you're elected, or you're reappointed. If you're not reappointed, let's back up. If you're elected and you actually had to fulfill a duty on January 1st, and there was a concern about whether or not the oath had been signed, we could kindly ask the clerk to come in and grab the oath book and have it signed that day. We could do that over there in your office.
Lido, normally, this whole context, the people who are elected in December, once the.
Yeah, the law's just signed at the org meeting, and they come in, and their families come in, and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
As far as appointees, whose term would have expired December 31st, that might have to take action before the org, the organizational meeting in January, they are considered holdovers and are continued in the full authority duties and responsibilities that they have. So it doesn't affect them if you're an appointee. So if you were, for example, a zoning board member or a zoning chair, the fact that the org meeting reappointing you to that position didn't happen until, say, January 7th, would not affect any decision that you made in that position, say, on January 5th.
Okay.
All right. So I just wanted you to know you have options.
Right. Well, then Friday the 2nd, the tax receiving now going to town clerk's office makes it so we wouldn't be able to do it till Friday evening, which could be an issue.
I understand. I just wanted to point out, you do have some flexibility. You don't have to worry that you must do it on the first.
Okay.
Anybody who's been appointed or has won an election, New York State law is designed to make sure there are no gaps in authority. So you have some options.
Okay.
I don't think, I'm not aware at least, many zoning board appeals applications either that are pending that might conflict on Monday.
In case we move to Monday?
Monday the 5th, yeah.
The 5th, okay. Well, we'll look into it more as it gets closer. I mean, we have plenty of time, even at the next meeting, to set the date if we have, if we have to change it. So back to procurement policy revisions. So this is up on the board is our procurement policy, the way it stands right now. This has been created probably 12 or 13 years ago, I think the numbers were used. And some of the things we've come up against with since COVID is for purchase contracts, the minimum amounts. Now, just so everybody understands, the state requirements thresholds are 20,000 and above for purchase contracts, and 35,000 and above for public works. These, these procurement policies here are town policies that can be adjusted by board motion, you know, for procurement. And one of the suggestions was, and I talked to this with our controller, for purchase contracts, we were looking to up that to 3,000 to 4,999 for the two verbal quotes written or emailed. And then that would move the second part, 5,000 to 19,999 for the three written or emailed or quotes or responses to RFPs. The other adjustments would be for public works, that would move up from 1,000 to 5,000 to 9,0999 for the two verbal quotes. And then the other threshold would go up to 10,000 to 34,999 for the three. The only other item on the policy that would change, on the backend in guideline six, there is good for purchases. Both of those have 500. We would up that to 1,000. Those are just like single item, one-off, small items that were listed there at 500. Reason being, because of cost and to not bog things down with repairs or, you know, declaring something an emergency to be worked on. That would help with issues we could run into with the procurement policy. But wanted to get the board's opinion on that. Okay. I know we've talked about it, and the town clerk and I were going over the org meeting. This is part of our organizational agenda, so it's a great time to adjust it and have it if it's that. So we will adjust those.
I got a question.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Just real quickly, by the way, I'm fine with all the numbers you just went. But would it help or would it be useful if we added to this policy a little bit to talk about defining why we're making the purchase and what we're going to do to determine, you know, whether or not it was a successful purchase? Things like, like in the business world, before I ever get to the procurement phase, I define, this is my problem, this is what I want to do to fix it, and this is how I'm going to measure whether or not it was successful. And if you work those right into the process, then when you do your RFPs and things, if you've got the data you need to move forward, plus, you know, say it's a contract, and, you know, three years from now, you've got to renew the contract. If you look back to, what did we expect this to actually do, and did it do that? And that makes you, you know, gives you that mature information for, should, should we actually renew this contract, or should we look at something else?
Yeah, it's, it's not a bad suggestion. I can tell you, in the two years that I've been looking over, and, you know, almost two years, that I've actually been signing the checks, the policy doesn't come into play very often with what we do at a normal day-to-day, week-to-week basis. Where it comes in is if we have a truck or a vehicle, we take it to, take it to get it repaired, and it needs a break job. repaired and it needs a break job. And let's say that pushes you over the, you know, purchase contract of like $1,000. If you're not, if you don't do it correctly, you're, now you're a little. Now, we can also sit there and say, okay, now that the tires are off and it won't pass inspection, is it feasible to pay a toll to get it to a county bid? And also, is it an emergency at that point? Yes, because you need the truck repaired. This is, this is more so to, not to usurp that, but to just make the process more palatable for getting work done and not grinding to a halt because you do have specialized equipment. You do only have certain places that can do that kind of work. So when you take it, you know, a normal inspection, you think it's going to pass, we can take it to two or three places to get it inspected. Then if it needs major work, you might have to tow it to a certain place if it's proprietary thing with one of the trucks. If it's something else, that person can do the work. And if we had to go and get a bid, that's going to delay that process or get a quote. You know, then we got to, oh, we got to get a quote to tow it over there. That's, that's what this, the intent was.
Yeah, see, I was thinking it was for all purchases, so therefore.
Yeah. No, I mean, I mean, this, most of our contracts, like with UniFirst or something, those are larger than those dollar amounts. So the, that, that usually falls into the two to three written or it's off sole source or state contract or county bid. So this is for the smaller things of like replacing tables and chairs that have now gone from being 100 or 200, 2, 3 or 400 a piece.
Okay, so this is not for reviving license plate readers? This is for.
No, no, any of those, any of those things would fall into a much larger, to one of the other, you know, the purchase contract part.
So maybe that's where we need to address that?
I'm sorry?
Maybe that's where we need to address these kinds of things would be at the purchase contract part? I'm just trying to figure out where to put.
Oh, about like revisiting it? Normally when we, like UniFirst, the contract came up last year, we, we went out and got bids from Centas and UniFirst, there's not a lot of people that do clothing uniforms and they also do supplies for us. So we got both contracts. Both of them are on either state contract or county or Sourcewell is a, you know, like a preferred source vendor. So then we could look at and decide which one was the best. Were we happy with the service we got from UniFirst over the last few years? And ultimately, we went with UniFirst and they were cheaper than Centas. But normally on those larger things, that, that process does get paid. Or on trucks or equipment or, you know, Al will tell you when we do road, road work and repairs, we, we follow the county contracts or the county bids and some of those have a rollover where that price stays for two years. So you don't have to worry about getting it again. But, I mean, yeah, we can, I mean, we try to go and reassess everything. There's, there's now, most of the contracts I came into are three to five-year contracts. So some of them will be ending under my term, you know, the copiers, printers. And those, those fall into the higher amounts anyway. Any other questions?
Also, you've already budgeted.
Yes.
So it's not like somebody's spending money outside of their budget.
Correct.
It would fall under a light item in the budget, like maintenance or equipment or something like that.
Yep.
There's another check there.
Yeah.
To balance off any activity.
The next item up was the Flock safety agreement. I know Mr. Schmidt had been talking to the salesman. I know we're still going around on that, so we're probably just going to table that again. I put it on the work session just in case we got any further with that, and I don't think we have. Yeah, so I know Mr. Moore had some questions to, you know, look at some things over also.
Yeah, well, and I'm still concerned about the privacy of our citizens.
I'm just concerned with us spending money that the county should be spending for us as well too, right? I think it should be a county expense because it's essence, they're the ones that are going to be utilizing that device, not the town. Essence, it's their sheriff's department. Yeah, I'm, I'm still.
There's been a lot of privacy issues with that system.
And for the record, and I may not be here for the vote, I'm not, I'm not in favor of the Flock program because of what Jeff has just said as well as Pete. It seems an unnecessary thing for the town to be getting involved in. So whether I'm here for the vote, all bets, I'm going to vote against it. If I'm not, I'm just registering my views right now.
Okay. And like I said, we'll table that tonight. Next item is Melvin Farms. What that is, is we had given the developer originally in the incentive zoning contract that was for a bond of a certain dollar amount of money. And they had requested us to, if they would, we, if the town would take a letter of credit in place of a bond. So the developer sent us the proposed terms of the letter of credit yesterday and given it to all board members. I don't think there's anything crazy there. If I put it up and it's anything surprising, it's the dollar amount that we'd asked for the bond to be in. It's a letter of credit that the bank will give them, two-year term. Usually letter credits are one year. I think what we were going to ask is the town attorney, you know, you explained most of the differences between bond and letter of credit, so. The board has any other questions?
Now that Dave has had a look at it, are you comfortable with it, Dave?
I, I mean, I generally am. The thing that does jump out at me that I think, and Al, tell me if I'm misremembering this, but with a, with a bond, we wouldn't be concerned that every two years we have to make sure that they, that it's renewed.
Well, we've got to remember too, we give them a two-year timeframe to get this completed as well.
I know, I know. I'm just, my, the times I've had bad dealings with letter lines of credit.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Letters of credit are when.
They expire.
They expire and they don't get renewed and you don't normally run into that so much with a bond.
So.
Other than that, I, I mean, I think the dollar amount's the correct amount.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying, Dave, because it's one more thing to keep track of. In, in this instance, I'm, I'm fairly comfortable in that the process is going to play out and the design and construction will be, should be completed before January of 2027 or December of 2027, whatever the effective date of this is.
I, I think the balance of it, I'm okay with.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's not even, I'm not saying no or don't do this because of the two-year renewal term. I'm just saying be cognizant of that. If there for some reason is a delay, we need to remember to insist that it's renewed.
Yeah.
That's all.
And it could be renewed if, if 75% of the work is done, you know, it could be reduced by 75%.
Yeah, this, I mean, I would expect that the developer, as they complete the pump station and the pipes, they're probably going to ask us to lower this letter of credit.
Like a reverse.
Yeah, like, like a punch list.
Which is, which is reasonable.
Yeah.
As long as the amount left in the, in the letter of credit is sufficient for the town, if we ever had to step in to.
Yeah.
Finish the work, bring it, finish the work and bring it to the point where a reasonable stop would.
Yeah.
That makes sense to me. I mean, I'm, like I said, I'm not horribly concerned in that, you know, product, the, the construction schedule should result in this work being 100% complete by the time the two-year period expires.
So my question would be, Dave, you said insist that the letter of credit be renewed.
Yes.
How's that insistence? How's that play out? Let's say that there, we have a punch list, this runs out, but there's nothing bad.
Before it runs out.
You can call on the letter of credit if they have a lead of order.
Before it runs out, that, that's the part, before the letter of credit runs out. So we would need to effectively calendar this. Me, Al.
Dina, Kevin.
Dina, Kevin, that, hey, this is three months or four months before this two-year period is about set to expire. Where are we? Now, a year and six months from now, a year and eight months from now, you may well know where we are. Could be hopefully it's all done. Al, this work is done, we don't even need to worry about it. If a year and eight months from now, we're not at that point, then what we would do is we would send either through Al or through me or through the town in general, send a letter to the developer and through the bank saying, hey, the letter of credit's about to expire in, say, four months. You're 75 or 80% complete. You know, our, you know. Give us a renewal letter, extend it. You know, we're not going to wait until the last minute. So extend it for another year or another six months.
A week on.
Or we're going to, or we are telling you now, we're going to assert a claim against the letter of credit. So it's just a matter of scheduling it and following.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that.
Right.
Yeah. But other than that, the dollar amount's okay and the availability of the funds to complete the project, that portion of the project, in the event for some strange reason the developer doesn't, are, I think sufficient. I think you think they're sufficient right now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, money-wise, they're good. That's, that's what we asked for.
This is what you were waiting on or what we talked about last time and said, hey, get us a copy of the letter of credit before we say it's okay.
And thank you.
Which it is. Keep calendar, you need to calendar.
Right.
Put a motion.
I, well, I read the motion and checked the DUC application. I'd be motion H to allow Melvin Farms developer Landmark Challenger LLC to provide a letter of credit in place of the issuance of a security bond, the amount of 4, 4,239,858, to satisfy section 4A1 of the incentive zoning agreement signed on September 29th, 2025. Perfect. And I, so Al, let me ask you this, seeing we're talking about Melvin Farms. What the developer's next step would probably be to come in front of the planning board right after, I mean, that'll let us move along on the map plan and report for the sewer district. And then I assume the developer will be coming in front of the planning board.
Yeah, so actually our next step is to move forward on the map plan and report public hearing for the sewer district formation. The developer is, I've been actually working with Julie and the developer is getting ready to submit to the planning board for subdivision site plan approval. I would anticipate that we'll see that on initial submission on the December planning board meeting agenda. So, you know, if they're going to start the planning board process, we need to move along with the sewer district formation process. We've kind of lost a month here to hit our goal of this thing being operational before the '27, '28 school year starts and getting pulver on, on sewers. While we had some, some flex time in our schedule, we ate up a big chunk of it by losing a month, basically.
Well, just to let the public know, this is, you know, now, now that the developer are going in front of the planning board with the plans, you know, based on the incentive zoning project and the planning board, you know, go through that process. So, and meanwhile, we'll be setting up the, you know, we'll be setting up the sewer district man planner report and have a public hearing for that. Which we have, we have the motion on the agenda tonight to be able to hold the public hearing on Thursday, December 4th for the district. Is that okay, Al? Because we'll have to get the letters out to the people within the district. The board okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Does anybody have anything else for the work session? Okay, seeing on the work session at 6:15 PM. Start the meeting at 6:30? 6:30 PM, we'll bring the regular meeting board. Start with the pledge. Pledge of innocence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone nation other god indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next item up on the agenda is, is the adoption of events. Can I get a motion to adopt the events from November 6th and the November 7th special meeting? All in favor?
I.
I'll be the saving that wasn't here. Okay. Next item up on the agenda is, official time here. Can I get a motion to initiate the public hearing for the two-tier-two battery energy storage moratorium at 6:30 PM?
I'll move it.
Okay, the public hearing is started. The reason for the public hearing is we are looking to extend our moratorium on battery energy, tier-two battery energy storage until February 20th. Part of the reason for this is with state guidelines just coming out recently, we have not updated our town codes. Many towns, I was actually at a town in Van Buren last night who was looking to instill a moratorium for battery energy storage in solar farms coming up in the next month. Tier-two battery energy storage has been seen to be issues and with, with mostly volunteer fire departments in our areas, it's a very tough issue to tackle if one were to catch fire. That being said, is there anybody that would like to come up and speak in favor or against extending the moratorium on tier-two battery energy storage until February 20th? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing on moratorium for battery energy storage at 6:30 to PM?
I'll move it. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yes. Public hearing is closed. Can I get a motion to open a public hearing on extending the sewer moratorium until February 20th, 2026 at 6:30 to PM?
I'll move that. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yes. Public hearing is open. Again, similar to the tier-two battery energy storage, we have updated some of our codes, but I have not reached out to one of the major landowners and someone who was also on the Ag and Markets Board to get information on how they feel our updated code would be. So that's part of the reason for extending this into February. That being said, is there anybody that would like to speak in favor or against on extending the moratorium until February 20th on solar farms? Seeing no one to comment, can I get a motion to close the public hearing at 6:33 PM?
I'll move that. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, yes, motion period. Citizens comments, I just want to let everybody know, we are adding one motion H to allow the Melvin Farms developer Landmark Challenger LLC to provide a letter of credit in place of the issuance of a security bond in the amount of 4,239,858, to satisfy section 4A1 of the incentive zoning agreement signed on September 29th, 2025. That was the only other addition. And just so everybody knows, we will also be tabling C on the agenda currently, which was a contract for Flock cameras. That being said, is there anybody that would like to come up and speak, citizens comments? Seeing nobody, we will go to town board comments. That's where it wraps.
I'll stick to the agenda.
I will stick to the agenda as well. Thanks for coming out, thanks for watching, and I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay. Supervisors comments, I just have a couple. Yet again, we do have a ZBA. We will have an opening on the ZBA email supervisor@townofwhitesanderson.org. Just send me a brief snippet of why you'd like to be on the zoning board. You know, we'll be filling that. We'll be doing interviews probably in December. The seat will take in January and the meetings are as needed, as the ZBA means. Some years it's once or twice, some years it's seven or eight times. It all depends on if there's anything to go in front of the ZBA. We are still doing the in-my-father's-kitchen clothing drive. We are still doing the in-my-father's-kitchen clothing drive, new socks, gloves, hats, anything for homeless people that in-my-father's-kitchen goes out. Not only do they help provide food to homeless people, they also look for jobs, and they also try to provide clothing to the, to the homeless people that they help with over the winter. We'll be doing that until the end, end of November into December. There's a box right out in the foyer in Town Hall. The other thing I'd like to tell everybody is have a good, happy Thanksgiving next week, and don't forget, if you wanna sign up to get up early in the morning and go run, you have to come on this turkey trot that takes you around town. And then the, that Saturday, I believe it's Saturday, the Beadle tree lighting and the parade, the parade lights that the fire department puts on, it's always well-attended. I think the parade starts at five-thirty with the tree lighting after the parade ends, and I think there might be fireworks again this year. So that is all I have. Department head reports.
Town attorney. What do you have to say?
Highway superintendent. Well, I think I should, first of all, thank you, gentlemen, for this position, but I have some reservations because I found out it's a little busier over there than where I left three years ago. We took a tour, Kevin, myself, and the new highway superintendent that's coming in on the first, Carl Magic. I was very surprised at the way the shot was. A lot of difference from three years ago. I don't want you to think that I'm over praising them to try to get in their best terms, but it's a good group of people. They're working hard. They, I had reservations about possibly rubbing them the wrong way, but a lot has been done just in the last couple of weeks. So I know that a lot of times get a negative response from the public. They think they don't work very hard, but you guys have got them busy. You got a lot of projects going at once, and what amazes me is I can pull these guys from one job, throw them on another for fifteen minutes, and then put them on another because we got so many things going that they handle it well. And usually, when you take a man off a job that he's all set to complete, he's got ten minutes to go, and you say, oh, you're going over here, you usually get fireworks. So with that said, I'm doing well with them, and I think that we're gonna get a lot accomplished by the time Carl comes in.
Thank you.
It's busy over there in Mariner Trail. It's quite a project. I gotta give Al credit for the fact that he's been very cute, communicated with me, and so that's not a problem. But that work over there is on schedule, I think, and it should be completed somewhere. Al, is it December he had it for getting to close it up?
Yeah, so, so if you don't, I'll get into the schedule on that, on where we're at.
Okay, I'll let you do that, but...
So as of right now, back to this. We should finish off the mainline drainage work next week Tuesday. Donnagul is gonna start milling on Wednesday, and then finish milling on the first, Monday the first. Casinella will be doing fine grading on the second, and Risselli is scheduled to start paving on the third. They should be able to do all of the mainline paving on the third, and then on the fourth, they'll drop back and do all the driveway aprons. But we should be finished up, and, and that thing should be black by, by the fourth weather permitting. We are gonna use the warm mix asphalt that's a DOT spec, allows the application on surfaces as cold as thirty-five degrees, so we should be in good shape from a temperature spec standpoint. Thursday looks, Thursday, the fourth, looks a little tuck-and-go temperature-wise, but hopefully, things hold out for us, and we're in good shape, and we got the surface temperatures we need.
Thank you. Dan, and just, I should have prefaced this. Our special meeting on November seventh was, we had John Butler resign from highway superintendent. We appointed Dan Parrish, who was a seventeen-plus-year employee in the highway department, to fill out the rest of the year until Mr. Magic can take his office on January first. So that is why, if you hadn't seen a meeting or two, you have a different person sitting here for highway superintendent. Just wanted to let the public know. Did you have anything else, Dan?
Well, as you know, excuse me, we closed the roads to parking, which goes from November first to April fifteenth, and the times are from two AM to seven AM, so that's a fact. We have decided to go back to mailbox repairs. Last winter, it was so busy, they couldn't keep up with it. The snow was just driving them right down, so. We're going to start going out and inspecting the damages. If it's wing related, if the wing hit it, we are definitely gonna repair it. But we are getting into, sometimes the wood is rotten, the, the base is bad. If it's, if that's the case, we might deny it, but we're gonna try to do our best to keep everybody happy. It would be nice if people went out in the fall and checked their mailboxes, make sure the height was right. It's supposed to be forty-two inches at least from the base to, to the bottom of the mailbox, eight inches from the curb or the edge of the road, and wiggle the darn thing to see if it holds up.
That's what we do with the wings and the snow crate. We wiggle it for them.
But to be a hypocrite, I haven't wiggled my mailbox this year, so, but I hope everybody else does. We are kind of going to keep track of snow being pushed across the road, which is illegal, plowing snow into the cul-de-sacs, or into circles. We can't have that happen because it backfires, and we have to take loaders out to pull it out, and it costs manpower, and so that is gonna be addressed. And other than that, it's the normal winter rules, so anybody has any problems, call. Alicia is excellent with talking to people with problems. She's real good at it, so don't be afraid to call. So like I said, that does it for now, and any questions, player away.
Just before you have any maker? Thank you. We appreciate you. Carry on. Town engineer, Al?
I was just gonna do the Mariner Trail schedule update, which we got through, so I got nothing else.
Okay. Town clerk?
I'll second mine, thank you.
Okay. Next up, the regular agenda. Motion A, I'd like to get a motion to adopt a local law under Chapter 102-7 of the town code, tier-two battery energy storage in the town of Lay Center. This moratorium will be extended to February twentieth, two thousand twenty-six.
I'll move it. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, yes, motion carried. Motion B, I'd like to get a motion to adopt a local law under Article twenty-nine to extend the moratorium on solar farms in the town of Lay Center. This moratorium will be extended until February twentieth, two thousand twenty-six.
I'll move that. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, motion carried. Motion C, we will take. Motion D, I'd like to get a motion to hold a public hearing on Thursday, December fourth, two thousand twenty-five, at six thirty PM in the town of Lay Center to consider the Cold Springs Sewer District Phase One Formation. This resolution shall authorize the town clerk to advertise for the scene.
I'll move it. I'll second it.
Discussion. As we will, motion H will pertain to the letter of credit in place of a bond. This is the next step in the process with Melvin Farms to start the sewer district formation in that area, which will pretty much extend from Palmer Elementary School down to Down Hicks Road to Hayes Road to the pump station. That people, people in the district will be receiving letters for the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, yes, motion carried. Motion E, I'd like to get a motion to appoint DFL Cohen as receiver of taxes, effective December twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Tax warrant will be issued, and taxes can be collected on that day.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, discussion. As we had talked about a bunch of times, the, we're moving tax receiving to the town clerk's office, so this is just one of the formalities of appointing her tax receiver, and the next motion to appoint her deputy is later as deputy tax receiver. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, yes, motion carried. Motion F, I'd like to get a motion to appoint Melissa McConaughey as deputy town clerk, effective December twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, with salary per the union contract.
I'll move it. I'll second it.
Discussion. This is just a formal appointment to take place for December twenty-ninth because we will be collecting taxes that week before January first of when Melissa would actually become deputy town clerk for the board meeting in minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, yes, motion carried. Motion G, I'd like to get a motion to appoint Melissa McConaughey as deputy tax receiver, effective December twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, with salary per the union contract.
I'll move that. I'll second it.
Discussion. What the deputy tax receiver and the town clerk, because they will each be receiving stipends for the tax-receiving duties in that department, and that is, that is something we've negotiated with the salary, with the union. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, yes, motion carried. Motion H, I'd like to get a motion to allow Melvin Farms Developer Landmark Challenger LLC to provide a letter of credit to, in place of the issuance of a security bond in the amount of four million, two hundred thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight dollars, to satisfy Section 4A1 of the Incentive Zoning Agreement signed on September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll move it. I'll second it.
Pete will get just second. As we had talked about before, the, the board, once we vote, will agree to take the letter of credit in place of the bond, and that will start moving this project forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, yes, motion carried. We will have a, we'll have to ask for an executive session for two things. Discussions relating to current location and employee history and dis, particular employee history and dis. Can I get a motion to enter into executive session at six forty-eight PM?
I'll move it. Second it.
Okay, we are in executive session. I do not see us having any other additional motions or items to attend to, so people are welcome to wait until we come out, but now have a good evening and have a good Thanksgiving.